Good evening. I just want to say at the beginning, there were a lot of legislative changes this summer. We actually had 34 policies that were changed or recommended by the state. We're bringing the last four in front of you tonight, so we just want to commend you guys for helping us pass those and our members of the committee, Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison, and the work of the committee, and we appreciate you guys helping us move those through because that's quite a bit of policy work to move through as smoothly as we have. So, on that note, the first policy that is listed, I'll try to summarize them. These were, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion. They're pretty simple. Most of them are required changes, but we'll certainly field questions if you have them. The first one is to delete the career status policy because you can't grant career status anymore. That's 7410. The 7510 leave...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question to Mr. Enrique. Being that there are suits related directly to this, if we eliminate this policy, what happens to the suits? And if those become whole, then do we have to reinvent the wheel and re-institute this?
Yeah. There have been challenges filed to the law. I think if the law is, you know, if they find it unconstitutional, we will probably then need to go back and readopt a policy that would provide for career status. But right now, since we've got the statute, I think the advice from the School Board Association and my advice would be to go ahead and conform our policies to the current law until such time as a court decides on it. In other words, the law is valid, has passed unless a court rules that it's unconstitutional. So, I think we probably do need to conform our policies to the current law rather than wait and have noncompliant policies in the thought that a court may set it aside. So, that'd be my suggestion.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. So, we're on 7510.
7510 leave, it, in essence, is about bus drivers and putting them in the requirement. Everything in that policy is required except it's optional to put hyperlinks in to the policy, so they're all required changes per the law. The third one, 7810, evaluation of licensed employees. All of the changes here are recommended or strongly recommended, so these are not required. And this is probably what we spent the most amount of time on at the Policy Committee of just trying to line those up with how we evaluate without being able to grant career status and how that changes. Again, we can field those questions if you want to field those questions. And then the last one, probationary teachers, nonrenewed. Everything there is required too except it says minor editorial changes to make sure it makes sense. So, the only thing that's, in essence, except for hyperlinks and an editorial change, that's not a requirement, is evaluations of licensed employees. So, I'm not sure if you have any questions on any of those policies tonight.
Okay. Well, we will start with questions on first reading, and we will start with Dr. Phillips.
So, on 7410, I understand that that's the law. You can't grant career status to any new employees, any new teachers in the system. But when we were having our discussion about the 25 percent contracts, I raised the possibility that we, as a board, as a district, could allow the same protections that are currently provided through career status. We don't call it career status. We just say it's a benefit of working for Cabarrus County Schools. I realize we have to take this particular reference to career status off the books, so I'm not suggesting that we not do this, but I would like to ask that you bring forward a proposal that would incorporate the due process protections, particularly for the teachers that are considering whether to relinquish their career status early to get the boost in their salaries.
I know at the last meeting, you mentioned that, and I know that Ms. Stone was beside of you and essentially said there was a way to put the provision in there which would guarantee them still that ability to appeal. I can't remember exactly the detail for that, but Ms. Stone, we did discuss that at our Policy Committee, and Ms. Stone is working on that, which policy to put that into, but she has written that. It will be brought forward when she does the revision.
Okay, good. It was my recollection that the board generally, as a whole, supported that, so it sounds...
And I've talked to Ms. Stone about it. We're working on that together, and I do think, you know, our goal is to capture essentially what the protections are. We won't be using career status language because that's been eliminated. And the case manager process, since it's set up as a state-administered process, we've been working a little bit on how to basically provide for an independent hearing and thinking about how to set that up. But I do think we can provide essentially the same protections that they have under career status as part of our extra due process, and there's no legal obstacle to doing that. So, we've been looking at the right way to word that, but we do hope to have a policy for you on...
And it was our sense that the board supported that, and I would say the Policy Committee did too. So, there wasn't much disagreement. It was just a matter of how to incorporate that, and as Mr. Enrique said, they're working on it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, do you have any comments on the policies on first reading?
Would that essentially mean just taking those career status policies and putting them under another existing policy?
I don't think...
Or adapting them to read Cabarrus County?
I think what we're envisioning is really changes to the, basically, the termination or demotion of career status folks. So, what the career status does is set up essentially protect due process protections before you could be demoted or dismissed. And so, I think we're probably, we may do it as a separate policy. It may be revisions to our dismissal policy, but to essentially provide those due process protections. So, that is what you'd structure. I think that's really where the protection of career status comes in, is that you can only be removed for stated reasons. And that part, even for regular teachers, probably not going to change. In other words, a list of reasons under 325. It's just that you won't have the same contractual protection. So, that is, I think, the goal is to essentially replicate the current due process protections under our policy. But we haven't, to answer your question, I haven't really decided whether it's better to just do it in a dismissal or demotion, whether we want a separate policy, and if so, what do we want to call it to kind of indicate this is what we're doing without calling it career status. So, that's something we're...
In effect, it's no longer a state career status policy.
Right. We clearly can't really call it career status or tenure because I think the legislators made it clear that they're, at least as a state level, eliminating it.
But if we're willing for the risk, if you will, to be shifted to us, we can...
Right. I think we can certainly provide more protection to our teachers in terms of, these are the only grounds for dismissal, and this is the review process provided. I think that's really what we're proposing.
And I'd like to commend Dr. Phillips for the wisdom of making that observation and promoting that idea to be considered that way, that way our teachers are still protected by our own policy. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schie, do you have any comment on policies on first reading?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only comment that I have is reference 7410. Obviously, you know, the new legislation has ruled out tenure, obviously, but it would make more sense to me to just indefinitely suspend that policy rather than just eliminate it. I mean, to me, since there's legal challenges that potentially could reverse this, that it would just, to me, make more sense to just indefinitely suspend the policy rather than terminating it.
You know, I guess it's all how you say it. I think Mark was essentially saying the same thing, that it's going away with the chance that it could come back. Is there any really real difference between an indefinite suspension versus an elimination? And is there any precedent for that? I mean, this happens, I guess...
My main concern with the existing policy was, you know, we provide for an automatic, you get your career status after you've met your years of service. And I do think, my view is it's important that that part of the policy at least not be in effect. Again, we can't, the statute makes it clear they can't get career status, but I don't want folks, and we're coming up to that season where, in the ordinary course, we'd have recommendations coming to you for career status, and that's what the policy would call for, would be board decisions by June about extending career status. Clearly, we're not going to do that because the statute says we can't. So, I think that's where... Now, I mean, if we like the policy, so I guess my thought would be probably repeal it. We've got all the language, so if that, if there's some injunction that rules that the statute is unenforceable or enjoins enforcement of it, I think it'd be a simple matter to basically readopt it on this language. Suspension, when I think of a suspension policy, it's usually for a particular case, like we're going to suspend the operation of our policy regarding approval of contracts to allow a particular action, as opposed to kind of just an indefinite shelving of it. So, I guess I think, my recommendation would be it's a little cleaner to repeal the policy with the understanding that we've got it on the books. I mean, it's electronically there. It'd be an easy matter to simply reinstate it if we got some court order or the legislature changed their mind and reinstated career status. We could easily just readopt it.
My train of thought on this, Mark, was that it would be in the policies that we currently have. If he was to go to policies on board docs and you would bring up 7410, it would be there. But obviously, it's no longer legal because we can't do it, but it could have written across it, you know, this policy has been suspended pending legal challenges, or something where that anybody that would want to know if we had a policy referenced to tenure, that it is there, but it is suspended. That was my train of thought, rather than not being there at all. You know, say, well, you know, it was here, but it's not now. But they would very readily see that it was, and it is now suspended indefinitely pending legal challenges. And that is just a thought. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, stand in the way by no means of doing what you, as our attorney, think is best, but I'd just like to, I'd like to see it stay there and just be suspended and, you know, where people could look at it and see readily that it has been suspended rather than wondering. Of course, if you're a teacher, you know already anyway, but somebody else coming here may not. So...
It would be listed also, we were just talking, it would be listed forever. If you looked up a 7410, it would be forever listed as a revision and part of revision history. So, it would be there to say, this happened at this time and was gone. It used to be a policy, and that never goes away, so I don't know if that helps or not, but...
Even when we, you know, remove or edit policies, we track that history because sometimes it's important what was a policy two years ago if you have a challenge. So, I think it would show up there. And again, I'll think about your suggestion about having some notation about a suspension. I guess I just, in my experience, this legal challenge could go on for years. It may be appealed and stuff, and I just don't, I'm not sure logistically how we show a suspended policy, and then we'll have to remember to go and pull it down if the legal challenge is not successful. But that may be an option. I'll think about that as something that we could do or have some notation, that there is, you know, currently litigation on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Schumaker, do you have a comment?
Do you want to move that to an action agenda item?
Well, after everybody comments, we will...
I thought it was, he was the last one.
No, we hadn't been to your side yet.
Okay. I thought Bob had already come.
You're up. Now, you're good. Carolyn, comment on first reading? Rob, comment on first reading? Okay. Do we want to put that on action, discuss? Well, we've got to go to second reading. So, yeah, okay. You can bring that back of how you best see fit to address that, and that's fine. Okay. Now, we're going to go to our second reading of 5.03.
Again, second read. Last time, I think there were minimal, just some editorial stuff that we've fixed, so unless there are issues with second read or any questions you have specifically, we can address those.
Okay. Board members, you've had these to review. Anybody have any comment on second reading? Nod of the head for consent. Okay, fantastic. That's what we'll do, and we will move on...
Thank you.
...to 5.04. You sounded relieved when you said that.
Your full policy didn't work.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a tough job, the Policy Committee. So, thank you, board members who participate and staff and administration who participate in that. It's a very important thing that we do, and it's not easy, so...
I'm an official policy wonk now.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, David. Matthew Phell, we will, welcome to the podium for our strategic plan. We have worked on this. We've given feedback, and we eagerly await the information that we're about to get.
Well, I don't know if I could have said it better, Blake, because that's pretty much what I was going to say. You've given all kinds of feedback and input into the plan. Also, got to hand it to the board for checking back at the data that we gathered several years ago and making sure that the plan aligns to what the stakeholders said was important to the district and aligns very well to that work. So, it just really shows that the board is a reflection of our key stakeholders and constituents. We know that this strategic plan provides us areas of focus and clarity about what we value and what's important to the system, so I'm very excited about the board's adoption of the strategic plan so that we can begin to promote it publicly and share it and let people know what the goals are. Any questions?
Fantastic. Thank you, Matthew. We will start with Dr. Phillips. Do you have any comment or question or anything you want to discuss about the strategic plan?
I really don't, but maybe, Matthew, just for the benefit of the viewing audience, could you highlight what you think are some of the key changes from the previous strategic plan?
Sure, sure, I could. In fact, I wish I had a list, actually, of all the key changes. Yes, I'm probably not going to remember them all, but I can certainly highlight some. Can I control it with this mouse right now? Okay. So, a couple of the few key changes, if you look in Goal 1.1, have to do with the actual measures. Some of the changes have occurred in the measures from when we started this plan back in 2010-11 than we have now. Otherwise, the goal is essentially the same. It's just the measures that have changed. In Goal 1.2, the board wanted to see the EOGs and EOC combined. So, essentially, it's the same goal. It's just two goals made into one. We also looked back at the trends that we'd had over time, and some of the actual goals were revised to reflect a more realistic, achievable goals throughout 2015 and 16. I'm now on page two. Yeah, just give me a second to review, since I don't have my list in front of me. But Goal 1.4 was an added goal as we began to look at the components of the North Carolina Accountability Model. So, the HCT is one of those components, so that was added to align with the state. Goal 1.5 is also a similarly aligned goal along with that state accountability model, where we're looking at the percent of graduates that receive credit for Math III. And then, Goal 1.6 is another goal that was added, again, aligned to the state's North Carolina Accountability Model for the percent of graduates who are CTE concentrators that have a silver or better. Silver or better can be sometimes confusing, which actually points out some changes to the footnotes, if you will, or the notes at the end of each goal. So, it was important for the board to provide a certain level of clarity towards these goals, for which I greatly appreciate. So, there are such things as links to key information that will help you understand the goal more fully. For example, there's a link to work keys information in this goal. Also, wherever we have comparative data, a link to that comparative data has also been included, or we denoted that there is no comparative data for that particular data set. So, all those kinds of things have been added to the bottom of all the goals, which is a significant change, I think, in the document itself. Moving to page three, 1.7. 1.7 and 1.8 are new goals. 1.7 focuses on the arts. Currently, right now, the goal reads about music. That goal will begin to expand and become more robust as the years go on and we get better at collecting that data and information. Also, it was important to the board to track and to set goals for participation, coming from the belief that if we get kids engaged in school, that they're more likely to graduate, they're more likely to have better grades, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll be looking at the participation rates of both band as well as the participation rates in sports. The participation rates in sports, as you can see, the baseline is for this year. We've had some great challenges in obtaining that data. It's all been paper-driven until this year. However, we have set it up in Power School now so that that information can be gathered electronically, and we'll be able to track that in the years to come.
Provide a Power School work.
Oh, God, I'm... I was doing really good. I didn't say a word, but...
It's not your fault. Trust me. We know that. It is not your fault.
Yeah. I think that part of work, "think" being the operative word. Sorry. We go to page four, Goal 2.1. All of that is essentially the same. Some of the actual goals have been changed, again, to reflect more realistic or achievable types of goals, and in some ways to push us a little farther, depending on where those numbers fell when the board was reviewing them. Let's see. Goal 2.2 did not change. It's pretty much the same thing. And Goal 2.3 was an added goal, an important added goal. And the reason I point that out is because it was, when you look at the alignment to what stakeholders said it was important, this was one of those things that they said was important at the time, but we didn't have a measure. We didn't have a way of going about it. So, EVAS has kind of provided us that measure, and so there's a goal for the percent of teachers who meet or exceed the teacher effectiveness index rating for student growth. So, that's a new goal.
Can I ask you a question? You know, we just had the rankings of teacher effectiveness. Does that parallel to this, or is it different?
Yes.
When we came in number two for teacher effectiveness in the state of North Carolina, does that compare to this specific 2.3?
Yes. I'm fairly certain, and I'll double-check on that, but I think what you're asking, are they essentially measuring the same thing?
Yeah, these are just at a micro level.
Yeah. I believe the report out of the Charlotte Observer was the percent of students meeting or exceeding.
No, it was the number of teachers. And this is a teacher effectiveness, I believe...
The number of teachers.
Yeah, this is the teacher...
I would have to, I'd have to look at their data. I don't know if they focus solely on the EOGs and EOCs, or if they included state final exams in that measure or not.
Yeah, because ours were at 90 percent effective, 90 points and change.
So, does NC teacher ratings use student test scores to calculate whether teachers met, exceeded, or fell short of targets of student growth?
Yeah, that doesn't tell me what they used. Jason, do you know what they used to come up with that?
Just look at...
I know, which exams?
Oh, I know what that is.
Okay.
I mean, I just wonder, is this the same or similar to what was in the Observer? That's my question.
Well, you can find out. Just look and find out.
Yeah, I'll have to look and find out and find out what they...
Dr. Shepherd is saying the answer to that question is yes.
Yeah. I mean, if I look at the numbers, the percentages, it looks like it would probably fall out pretty close to what the Charlotte reported, so I'd want to say yes, but I'd have to. But he's saying yes. He's my boss, so yes, it is. I'm good with that. Yeah. For page six, Goal 31A and 31B, really, the only change here is that, and I think very logically, the board saw the need to combine certain elements of satisfaction along with the hard data about that particular issue. So, in this particular example, this is about discipline data. So, you have the discipline results, and then you have the satisfaction results related to discipline. So, they're just combined in the same chart, and then there's a goal for the discipline, and then there's a goal for the satisfaction. And that plays out in Goals 31, 32, and 33, As and Bs. Another shift in all three of those goals related to discipline was how we report the measure. Before this revision, they were reported out in per 100. Part of that discussion was how difficult it can be sometimes to understand what that means and be able to translate that into real numbers. So, we changed it to the percent of students with two or more referrals, which, based on our PBIS expert, was an appropriate research-based number for becoming high achieving related to student discipline. And Goals 34 and 35, I'm sorry, in Goal 34, that did not change. Goal 35 is a new measure related to the health of our students, the percentage of free and reduced eligible student participation in breakfast. So, you'll see some of that baseline data in the goals set throughout 2015 and 16 in order to increase our students' access to breakfast, a healthy breakfast, to begin the day. Now, moving on to page nine, Goal 41 was an added goal as well. This one's about students having the opportunity to participate in blended and/or online courses, a direction that the state is moving in and education is, generally speaking. We want to ensure that our students have that experience so that they can be successful as they move on to other opportunities in life. And Goal 4.2 is also an added goal. As we well know, Cabarrus County Schools is the right choice, and in that particular concept, there are, we're much more competition than we've experienced in the past with the opening of charter schools. We believe we are the right place for students, and we provide the best education. And one of the ways we can measure that is the percent of eligible school-aged students within our boundaries that attend, that choose to attend our school system. Moving on to Priority Five, Goal 51. Goal 51 is, has not changed. Goal 52 was an added goal related to transportation. In September of 2012, our bus inspection defect average was, let's say, not very good, 91. So, it was important to improve that. It was improved very quickly from the fantastic job of the Transportation Department, and now you might even consider that a benchmark. So, you'll notice the goals going forward are just to keep that number or go less than that number. They really set a benchmark level very quickly. And Goal 53 was also an added goal and has much to do with the budget discussion that you had previously, the important understanding that much of our needs are coming out of our facilities and the money we need in order to maintain those facilities over the coming years. We have learned through much research that it is an established benchmark to have 2 percent of your current assets for the maintenance of those facilities, and the board felt that their work with the county commissioners was very important, and that relationship was very important. So, you see that the standard is beneath the goal, but the goal is much more realistic in terms of moving us in that direction over time with sort of the ultimate being to get to that benchmark level of 2 percent. And Goal 54 was an added goal where we want to maintain a fund balance of 8 percent or above to show that we are a financially stable organization and that our money is spent wisely, and we use the taxpayers' money well. Goal 5.5 is not a new goal, but we continue to do very well, as you can see from those results over the past few years. And then, Goal 56 is an additional goal where we would like to see our students have a one-to-one ratio by 2015 and 16 with students to every connected internet device.
Fantastic. And those were some of the quick highlights. Mr. Harrison, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
In a nutshell, anyone in the public who wants to know how we've been doing or how we expect to be doing should be able to look at this and be willing to read 10 pages and see pretty clearly, succinctly, and intelligibly for, all this stuff that to your average person is a lot of education speak, has been broken down, I think, in a much more layman's term kind of way here. I think it's a big improvement over the, my understanding of this equivalent thing that we did a year ago. I was going, but this makes much more sense as a layperson, I think. But it is available for the public to understand where we've been recently and where we hope to go in the future. And I think it is, it's a document the public can access and comprehend, and I'm just very proud of the work that you've done on here to make the public more able to comprehend what the heck they're doing in the schools and that we are being good stewards of the resources and the funds and the resources that we have available to us.
Yes. You know, I appreciate that and thank you, but the funny thing is, as you were talking, I was going to say, and that's thanks to the leadership because that was the guidance. That's what you wanted to see. That was, you know, we kept working at it, working at it till we got to that point. So, I thank you as well for your leadership.
You translated what we asked you to do, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu, any comments?
Just briefly, Matthew, I just wanted to ditto what Mr. Harrison said. You know, you've come a long ways. You really have, and you've done an excellent job on this, putting together what the board members wanted, and so, it's an excellent report. And, you know, I think that, like David said, if anybody wants to know what we've done, they can very easily go to this strategic plan and see what we've done, where we're headed, what our goals are. And you did an excellent job in preparing it, so I, for one, appreciate that. And thank you again for coming so far your own self.
Thank you. And this will be posted on our homepage.
Okay, fantastic. Mr. Schumaker?
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Ditto. And again, you answered that, and make sure our viewing audience heard that, that it will be posted on our homepage, because this has got some, just some extremely great data, and I think it'd be great for the parents to see this data. It is really good, and you did an extremely, extremely good job, Matthew, in answering and getting the data that we requested, putting new items on that we seen come up, and again, following the plans that we had put in place. So, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
I'll echo what everybody else says. It was a...
I'll echo what everybody else says, it was a well-done and well-put-together document. It shows that we've done a lot of good things. Others also shows that we have some things we have to work on, and that's kind of what we need this document for. And I think, you know, for the general public to look at it, adding those links that you had added to kind of explain what in the world are some of these things? There's a lot of terminology and acronyms that are used in education that I've learned over the last year. This helps at least give you a link to kind of help explain some of those things. And there are also some of these links that we try to compare ourselves to, like, school districts. So, there's extra links here that will go out and just show you what the comparables. I mean, we want to be a top 10 school district in North Carolina, but we also want to show you what we, what are like districts, and I think you've done a good job doing that as well. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter, and I just want to not only thank you, I'll thank our board. You guys did a tremendous job. We did two-by-twos with Matthew, and I know for the one that, I did mine with Mr. Schumaker, and so, there's a couple of things on here that specifically come from his background and his point of view, and I think that's what makes a good board and makes a good school system, that we get a, get something that we haven't had before, and all of a sudden, hey, let's make that a goal, and let's achieve that goal. So, board members, thank you very much for your hard work and your determination to work with Matthew to put this together. So, we're going to approve this on consent agenda. Everybody okay with that? Okay, fantastic. We will put that on consent, and we will move forward to 5.05, Facilities Request, and ask Donna to the podium, and I guess Brian's not here, but that's okay. We missed Brian, but Donna, take it away.
I'm representing both Brian and me tonight. He's doing some other things. Brian Tyson, I would like for you now to consider reviewing a naming request, and I'd like to invite Mrs. Carla Black and Mr. Glenn Paget to the front. This is a naming request from Concord High School, and as they come forward to present formally the request, I think it's important to introduce Concord High School as a school of many traditions and a school that frequently acknowledges, acknowledges, excuse me, the community's support and contributions of people who have made it what it is. Traditionally, it's one of our older high schools, even though the facilities are not the oldest, oldest, we would say, it is one of the older ones. And being a traditional city school, you will see those frequent acknowledgements, and I think that's why we're here tonight, to look at someone who's made great contributions to the school. And in case you haven't met him, this is Glenn Paget, who is the head football coach at Concord High, and you know Carla Black is the principal at Concord High. I turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you. I hope you can read this. Appreciate you guys letting us come and talk with you just a few minutes about something that's near and dear to our heart. One of the great things, or one of the many great things about being an educator and a coach is the ability to watch young people in their educational journey, not just in the classroom, but on the field and in the weight room, the practice field, the fieldhouse, and how they interact with adults in the community. And our goal in doing that is hopefully not only to make them better athletes, better students, but to make them better young people and better citizens in life. And one of the blessings that I've had in my career is working with some gentlemen that have, have been mainstays at the schools that they have taught at. I think back to Coach Leroy Holden, who was a 30-plus-year athletic director and basketball coach at North McLemore High School, and Mr. Bill Ford, who was a longtime athletic director and baseball coach at Concord High School, and Coach EZ Smith, who was a head football coach at Concord High School for 29 years, and the excellence that they exemplified not only in their profession, but in how they took care of young people, not just as a role model in sports, but as a role model in life. And I think one of the important things as educators, sometimes it gets lost in this, is the legacy that they leave and what that legacy of excellence is all about. And one of the things that's near to us is what Coach Smith's legacy at Concord High School has been. You know, I was blessed to work with Coach Smith for 11 years as an assistant coach and had been back there fortunately for the last five years with Ms. Black and the fine staff that we have at Concord. And all of the positives that came out of Coach Smith's teaching and coaching there at the high school, whether it be winning games, and you can see he won many games, over 100 young men, and the scholarships that they earned as a result of playing sports. College educations, to be quite frank, in most cases would not have been able to be paid for. And as a result of all of those things, what we decided to do, and we think and feel compelled to ask you for, is the naming of the field at Concord High School to be named EZ Smith Field. If you look around our community, if you look around other high schools in the state and throughout the southeast, as well as colleges, many of the colleges and high schools have stadiums named after a namesake. For example, our football stadium is named Dr. Robert C. Bailey Stadium, with the blessing of the Bailey family and with the blessing of the Williams family. They have, they have encouraged us to move forward with this and asking you for this naming. And what that would mean is, with your blessing that the field would be named EZ Smith Field at Robert C. Bailey Stadium, something that I think is appropriate, it's well-deserved, and it's quite timely, in fact. Thank you.
Fantastic. Carla, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think he said it.
He said it very well. Okay, fantastic. We will start with Mr. Walter. Do you have any questions or comments?
I had a couple, and congratulations on an outstanding football season.
Thank you. Good people.
Exactly. I had, this is the first time we've had a naming thing that came before us, and my thoughts being is, if you listened earlier, if you were sitting here through the budget, one of the things that you all had asked for and really wanted was a turf field over there at Concord. And it's really, here, it's a want, so it's not something that would ever be funded anytime real soon. And my thought process would be, if we went, we went out and allowed the field to be sponsored by somebody to raise the funds, to have that happen, and would this limit the board for doing that? I guess the email that I got earlier said that's not necessarily the case, and I'm going to take you, you guys, I guess you understand that better than I do. But that was my concern, and the other concern I had is, somebody had already told me it was already named Webb Field. Is that true?
No, sir. That is, Webb Field is the field that is located over at the Glenn Center now.
Right.
Of the old Concord Middle School and previous to that, the Concord High School.
So, it does not have a current name now?
No, sir. The field is not named.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments?
Well, y'all usually know what I know about naming, but EZ's something special. So, I may, may not go with my regular thing, but, because normally, they all know how I feel about naming something with somebody still, you know, still alive. And so, but with that, and I kind of have the same concern, because a lot of times you can raise funds if a company usually would, you know, you know, support something like that. You have a tendency, if a large corporation would come in, maybe you could get that turf field a lot faster. But then EZ has a lot of pull, so maybe that would help you. But that, that's the only compliment that I have.
Great, thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Schumaker?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
I remember our days over at Northwest when you were there about a decade ago. Actually, it's a little more than that, but, so, yes, and I fully support this, and I think that, you know, even though I was raised, my kids were raised at Northwest, EZ has really contributed a tremendous amount of positive things to our community and has done so much for it and really made an indelible print, an unforgettable imprint on a lot of, a lot of lives, and we, I so fully support what you're trying to do here.
He coached my boy, too.
He coached your son?
Yes, he did. You remember my boy, don't you?
I'm going to guess.
Oh, he coached your son, yes.
He coached my son.
I'm going to guess he ran a lot of laps.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just kidding, just teasing. Mr. Shue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know who said it, but I heard somebody say a long time ago, they said, "Don't give me flowers when I die." You know, if you want me to have flowers, give them to me while I'm alive, while I can enjoy them. And I think that EZ is just as fine a fella as I've ever met, and he's well-deserving of this, and I thank you, Glenn, for asking this to be done and on EZ's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shue. Mr. Harrison?
I'm gathering that Mr. Smith is very humble as well, because you're here.
He has his moments.
You're here doing such a fine job for him. Yeah. Well, I'm very supportive of the proposal and appreciate it being brought to us, as well as Principal Black's constant, constant, constant use of Facebook to tell the world how her various sports teams are doing, constant. It don't stop. You've got, you're working for Facebook. I know that. Every, every sports game that comes up. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips, any comment?
I think the request is highly appropriate, and I definitely will support it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. Carolyn, did you have something to add?
Well, I just had to say Northwest went to the semis the year my son was there.
That was good coaching.
Yeah, it was.
The only question I have, and forgive me if this is somebody that I should know, but when you said that with the blessing of the Bailey family and Williams family, and I don't know who Williams is.
Patty Williams is Mrs., Dr. and Mrs. Bailey's daughter.
Okay, gotcha. Well, I have, you know, utmost respect. I've met EZ on a couple of occasions, and I tell you, just to win 254 football games, I don't care who you are, that's, that's getting it done, and it's my understanding that not only that, but he was an incredible influence on the student athletes, and so, that's, that's certainly the kind of person that we want to recognize. I think Mr. Shue put it very, very well. So, board members, with that, are we, everybody okay with consent agenda?
Yep.
Consent, okay, fantastic. We will formally approve it next week.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate you very much for coming and being here and bringing this to us.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we will move on to 5.06, and we'll ask Mr. Whitkey to come to the podium, and we're going to talk about the fee for the new elementary school design. I say this all the time, but, you know, I want to make sure everybody knows what we're doing. When we interview architects, we can't negotiate, we can't hire them based on a fee. We have to hire them on qualifications, then they come back, and we have to negotiate a fee. If we don't like the fee, we can move on and go get somebody else. We're not stuck with them and stuck with this fee. So, I just want everybody to understand that. That's not the recommendation. The recommendation is we accept, you know, the, what Mr. Whitkey and Dr. Shepherd are recommending, but I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And with that, Mr. Whitkey, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, you know, we're still really negotiating with, with the architects. We, they've submitted information, I'm presenting it to you this evening. We're having a conversation with them again tomorrow morning, and we, we basically, what I've said, both in the document before you and also in a email recently, is, in my belief, true. This is a very, very difficult project in terms of timing. I think we've talked about that many times. If you look at the overall fee, what they've asked for in terms of their base fee of $761,000 comes out to about 4.7% on the construction line of roughly $16 million. That, that's well within the average range. It is not necessarily an absolute guarantee that we're going to use the E Plan that they used in other places. Just, just bringing it forward, we've got to update it for code, we, they have to update it for code, they have to update it for being used here in, in North Carolina. And there's, there's a lot of questions, too, about, we don't want the exact size that they've designed, we want something with a larger core, so they've got to increase the, the size of the core spaces accordingly and some other program requirements that we have. So, there, there will be changes to what they've designed in the past, and so, that in turn is certainly a factor. But I think, as I mentioned in my, in my email, that, that's, to me, the biggest thing, having been on the receiving end of one of these awards myself, is when you, when you have this time of, this type of time constraint, you are really under the gun from, from the get-go. And I, I think, as we've mentioned before, in terms of the selection of the firm, they have the manpower, they have the staffing, if you will, to do this project and to do it effectively. I think that we, we will talk to them about their, their total fee, but in, in recounting the, and I didn't, I didn't list each and every part of it, but in addition to the, the base fee, we are, we are requesting them to handle the demolition of the existing Odell School, the professional cost estimates that we require of them as, this is kind of pre-bidding. We want, we want it really done by a third party, so we, we have the best going forward in that respect. We want a, we will probably have to deal with a wetlands permitting issue along one portion of the, of the border of the property that they'll have to address. There's a potential for having to obtain a conditional use permit if we're dealing with the county. There's roadway improvements, there's sanitary sewer service resolution and possible improvements, and there's also sustainable design elements. All of that is what we're trying to do for an additional $105,000. It's, I also attached this information that Mr. Burnett located on the DPI website. It's a bit dated, and maybe that plays into it, too, because of the, the, the date of the document that you're looking at is 2011, but was based on 2010 information. And on average, and we're looking at a lot of schools that were reported to DPI during that time period, we're looking at an average of a 6% fee, and that includes, you know, brand-new schools, it includes remodelings and additions, it includes all sorts of things, but on the whole, an average cost of 6%, and that was back almost four years now. The, the idea that, you know, that this is a reasonable amount of money, or not reasonable, I guess, based on our experience, based on what we've paid in the past, but more importantly, what we're asking them to do today to get this project completed in time for us to open in August of 2015, I submit requires this, this fee, and I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitkey. We will start with Dr. Phillips.
You, you said that the, the stuff, the data on the screen is, is from the state, and includes a number of schools, and I assume it's, is also for a smaller-sized elementary school than what we're going to build, because most school districts don't build 900 or 1,000-seat elementary schools.
Typically not. That's correct.
Yeah, so, that's why that number's lower than what we say it's going to cost. But having said that, does the $866,000 fee fit in the budget that you have in your mind for this school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
All right, well, that's good. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
I guess I have to kind of, if you feel that that fee is appropriate, then I'm, I'm good with it, based on this kind of breakout historically, and then you'll apply this breakout in, in our actual work as we go forward on the project. So, if, if that's your recommendation, I'm, I'm in support of it.
It is. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glenn, after being doing this not near as long as you have, but been doing it for quite some time and built since I've been on the board, this is, this will be the eighth elementary school, and to come out with the 4.4%, 4.7% thereabout compared to what we've paid in the past is very reasonable. I think it's very reasonable. I, I do have some concerns, though, about what we're going to be designing. Are we designing? You know, you're looking at the, the modified E floor plan, and I'm assuming that's a single-story footprint. Is that correct?
It can be a single or it can be a partial two-story. There are some issues with soil integrity on the site that we've looked at, and, and those are the things that, you know, because we don't have a defined site just yet, we, we haven't, we've told the architect we would be using the E Plan, but we haven't said that it would be a one-story or a two-story. We've, we've looked at, the schools that we looked at happen to be one-story, but in most cases, they can be, a portion, a portion of those could be two-story. It, it really depends on the, on the cost efficiency of doing it, and, and there's, there's a lot of good things about, in terms of just student, student comfort, if you will, and, and accessibility to spaces on a one-story building. And I think that when we talk about building a larger school, and we, when we, these are pretty good-sized schools, as you know, the one-story tends to have a more human scale to it. However, older, older kids are certainly used to going up and downstairs these days, and they, they certainly don't have a problem. Many of them live in two-story homes. So, yeah, I'm not saying that that's ruled out at all. That's not what this is about, but I can tell you that we certainly are going to be discussing. discussing that as we move forward. And a lot will have to do with, frankly, the site, the placement of the building on the site, and what kind of soil we have to deal with.
Right. And, you know, we had corresponded, I don't know if I got anything back from you yet, because I've had computer problems, Mr. Clut, Ms. Probst and I have talked about that. But anyway, you may have responded to my email, referenced this, and I really would like to see us do the, the two-story that we've done in the past. I mean, this obviously has to be revised because of code changes and different things like that, but looking down the road, trying to be a little, you know, a little bit more visionary than maybe I have been in the past, and that is, you know, you look at what we're facing now with roof replacements, the square footage of roofs. If you've got 80,000 square feet of classroom space, and it's, and the E program, then obviously you've got a full 80,000 out there. But if you've got a two-story building, then you have half that, or less, of roof footage, whereas, and then when it comes to your plumbing, obviously, instead of going out, you go up, and then having four walls instead of eight or 12. And, I mean, to me, it just makes more sense to do the two-story. And I don't know, this would be something that the administration might could tell us, if we've had accidents where children have, have fall, have fell, you know, in our two-story schools. I don't know that we've had any incidents like that. I mean, they might have been, but I don't think that is a, a huge concern, because, like you said, children are used to going up and downstairs all the time, everywhere, and matter of fact, they probably like it pretty good. Let's, and burn up some of that energy, you know, going up, down the steps. But let's be reasonable, though, whenever we consider this, and if it is a soil problem, I think that, you know, we're talking potentially millions of dollars here, you know, going up instead of going out. And I don't think it would cost us that much to fix the soil, if we have to take the out, take out the old and put in new, or whatever. And Mr. Kagan and I talked about it just briefly, and I don't know about pilings and things like that, because I'm, I'm not an architect or engineer, but I think, though, if we have to consider that, then obviously you would want to only do as much as you had to do to make sure that the weight-bearing, you know, would be right for the two-stories, two-story structure versus doing the whole site for the whole building, unless it is a major issue, and if it is, then it's probably the wrong site. And that's just my thoughts on it. But, you know, I have no problem with the fee. I think it's a good fee, and I just hope that they'll do us as good a job as some of our past architects have. Thank you, Mr. Whitkey.
Thank you, Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Schumaker.
Well, based on our discussions with, in our meeting with the architect, and I know that they've hit the ground running, and they're really pushing, have got a very aggressive time schedule that they're working on, so I think the cost is reasonable. I know that they'll do due diligence to give us the right, right design, based on whatever it is that is out there that could possibly impact us if we try to go to a two-story or not a two-story. I think that the site and the, and the engineering that we're paying for will tell us the proper direction, and I'm not going to be sold on one versus another. I know that he owes me a, an NPV analysis this week, so if you could push him to give it to me before Wednesday, so I can begin looking at some sensitivities on that, I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter.
Well, Glenn, I had sent you, of course, the request when I first saw that number, because I thought it was kind of high. And then you sent me the reply with, with all that was going to be included in it, and after you sent me that, then, into the timeframe, looking at that, then I felt a little bit more comfortable with that. But of course, I want you to go back and make absolutely sure that's the lowest number I can get, because you know me, I want to make sure that's the best number I can get.
Yes, I understand.
So you know that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know with me, I'm, I'm wanting to make sure. So if you're comfortable with it, then when you sent me that data, I, I felt a little more comfortable with that. Now, with me, I would be good with, with either, either the two-story or the other, but my, my only concern with doing that, when we go with a two-story, then we have to, you know, we can't put all the children on a two-story.
Right.
And that's, that's the downside with it, because you can, you can't put, you know, what is it, fourth and fifth graders can go, or third.
Third, fourth.
Yeah. See, all children can't go on that. And still, that is such a high-growth area, we're, we're limiting ourselves. So, you know, it's, you're doing this number here, so if we would start getting high growth, you know, we, we could, we could hurt, hurt ourselves with that. And so that's where I'm concerned with that, where if we did do the one level, we wouldn't have to worry about that, well, are these fourth or fifth graders, and, or, you know, and so that would be a concern I would have with that. So, and two, as I mentioned, I'm sure we've checked this out, two, looking at a two-level with the proximity to where the location, one of the locations we had looked at, I was, I was concerned with that location, whether it could take a two, a two-level.
Right.
And, you know, I had, had voiced that to you.
Yes.
And that was a concern, and I'm sure you're checking that out, because I know that we had ran into some, some other concerns with the, one of those roads, the, them raising it up so high, and, and things with that. So I voiced that to you. So with all that taken into consideration, what we're addressing now, I think we're, we're good with that fee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter, do you have any questions or comments?
I think the timetable is, is a critical aspect here, if we're trying to get this thing built, but, so I'm okay with the, the number. I don't have a preference over a one-story or a two-story. I've heard arguments either way, so I'll leave that up to, to you all. But don't we need to have a site fairly soon, or are we going to have, have that news on, on a, a location within a month, or?
Yes. Yes, sir. We are working on that, and we hope.
Because I think that's, you know, you can't design anything until you, you've got your site selected.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Yeah, and I'll just, I don't have any real comments to make, other than, you know, architecture is a lot like some, you know, it's, any, I've been around this a long time, and any project you do, you look at it, and it just knocks your socks off, you can't believe how expensive it is. And then you start getting into it, and you start calculating man-hours and what's all involved, and then you come to find out, well, okay, yeah, that's reasonable. It's just, it's one of those things that this looks like a huge number anytime you start a project, so. But comparatively speaking, it's, it's, it's fine. I mean, it's lower than, than, you know, the information you provided, and it is within the line item that we had, where we originally broke out the cost for the project. So we're, we're at least starting off on the right foot. Now, we'll see, as far as the one-story or two-story, as Mr. Whitkey said, that's going to be driven by the geotechnical engineer, you know, and then at some point in time, you'd sort of have to make a cost-benefit analysis of, of how to, how to proceed from there. So that's what we'll do, and we will do, we're going to do some of this, or a good portion of this, at the subcommittee level, but, you know, our pledge to you, the rest of the board, is to make sure we just communicate back, so you know what we're doing and what the decisions are, and if there's something that we feel like is, should be a board decision, then we'll come back to you and let you know. And so we've got a comment from, from, from Dr. Phillips.
Well, I had one, one question that popped in my mind after everybody else was talking. You, you had said that the, the existing design that mostly has needs to be modified, among other things, to have a larger core facility, and I know earlier, when Kelly was talking about the capital budget request, she was saying that we, we think we may have to build the elementary school for 900 rather than 1,000. Are, are you thinking that you would build the core facility for 1,000, so that if in the future we can expand? If we need to expand, we could do that and still accommodate all the students in the cafeteria?
Right, because we really don't know what's going to happen in 10, 15, 20 years, so you, you want to build the core to at least be, be able to address the potential to enlarge it, and, and that seems to be the, the footprint that our schools have gone to when we have enlarged. So, yes, we, we, the, the core currently in that plan is a 900 core, and we would be expanding, asking them to expand it to 1,000.
Okay. That sounds smart.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Schumaker.
One more thing. It's not so much to you, Mr. Whitkey, it is just a general comment to the board. The analysis that I asked the architect to provide was dealing with HVAC in a geothermal application, looking at some way to save dollars over the cost of the project. So the NPV analysis will look at the project over a 50- or 60-year time slice, will have some sensitivities in it associated with energy costs, and with, also with, with inflation, and then we'll look at that, and then I'll, we'll have, we have a vice chair meeting this week with the, a chair meeting with, with the commissioners, and I wanted to run some of the results of that. The outside thought was to go to a more energy-efficient model, at least on the HVAC equipment, would cost us about another $750,000, but if I can show, if we can show, if the analysis shows that there's a true huge advantage at the end for our taxpayers, and, and that cumulative effect, you can't just look at where am I, what am I paying in year 60, but it's what was I paying from year 20 through year 60, after I paid the building off and everything's gone? How much savings did I generate for the taxpayers, because I went something more energy-efficient than if I had gone less energy-efficient and saddled them with recurring costs on, on energy? We don't have a lot of time to make the decision. He told me I have about two weeks to make a decision, once he gives it to me, and so, you know, once I get the information, I'll be glad to share the sheets with you folks, and y'all can bleed in on, and let me know what you think, but I'm going to try to make the pitch to our commissioners to at least think out of the box and think this potentiality. We do not need to saddle our taxpayers with additional burdens, especially with energy, and, and I think this is an opportunity still now, even though it's the 11th hour, to try to salvage and save, and save our taxpayers some money in the future, so.
One question. You know, every, when we talk about energy, and you keep seeing this, and all this stuff now about coal ash, dah, 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 and all this stuff with this, the cleanest, most efficient kind of energy there is, is natural gas. I don't care what anybody says, when you talk about things that go back into the atmosphere and everything else. Are, are we even looking at natural gas when we look at these buildings? I mean, when we talk about the, the, and I just got a thing in the mail today, talking about, whatever you do, I'll run you a gas line. I mean, when we talk about energy and about doing all this stuff, and, and like I say, when you talk about pollutants going into the, the air, and, and what, I mean, because if you burn anything or electricity when it's being generated and everything, it puts off more stuff into the atmosphere than anything else. When you make electricity, what it has to do to make it, it, it puts everything in. Natural gas, and I, I don't have any kind of, I'm not getting any kickback from natural gas people, I tell you that. But I'm just talking about, I've done all kinds of research, and that's what, are we doing that?
Yes, we, we look at that. As we look at, we're looking at solar, we're looking at geothermal, we're looking at a variety of things at this point. The problem is the very, very compact schedule we're working in, so we can only spend so much time looking at those options. But, I mean, we're, we're trying to get natural gas out to, out to Mount Pleasant as quickly as we can, for a simple reason that we're on oil there, and we'd love to have the, the ability to have access to that. But in that case, it's a question of what, what is profitable for the gas company, and what makes sense. Some of these sites are so far out that it may not make sense to, to the gas company to do that.
I was just curious, but that is, that is the cleanest thing.
Thank you, Carolyn. Bear, you got one more comment to make?
Yeah. Just for our viewing audience, and for the sake of the board members that don't know, a net present value is what an NPV is. It's basically a cost analysis, and it, and it compares dollars in today's dollars, and then extrapolates them out into the future, so that you can kind of compare costs in, in different levels. And it's, it's a regression analysis, and it's a little complex, but if we had some calculus teachers here, they would be able to help us run this for us.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay. So is everybody okay for consent? Nod of the heads? Yep. Okay. Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. We are moving right along. We'll keep you at the podium for 5.07. Request for approval of consulting firm to conduct the CCS facility assessment study. Actually, we won't keep you very long, because, board members, we had 18, 20?
20.
20 firms respond to the, the RFQ, and we pared it down to four. We have invited the four firms to interviews this week. We're going to give each firm 30 minutes, and then a 15-minute Q and A. So they get technically 45 minutes to make their presentation, and we are doing that Wednesday afternoon. So then, so this item will, we'll go ahead and put it on action, so we can talk about it, but this will be something we'll talk about next week. We don't have, we just didn't want to wait another month to be able to say at the work session who we picked, and then wait a week. So that is this Wednesday. So that is that, and we will put that on the action agenda, Ms. Monroe. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. That was a terrific presentation. We'll move on to 5.08, submission of training hours for Dr. Phillips, and I have no reason to not put this on the consent agenda if anybody does not object. Okay? Consent?
I hope nobody objects that I went to, got it from NC State.
Nah, we won't hold that. Okay. Board members?
At least he stayed in red.
Hey, Jeff, can you send us updates on when there's additional training opportunities?
I'll be happy to.